And we'll do and we'll have an approval of the agenda. Is there any modifications or anything to that?
These are no mo- modifications, so I'll make a mo- motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now, uh, is also called for approval for of the minutes. Were there any comments or anything that we needed to address there?
Um, no.
Yeah.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
Yeah, a move that we approve the minutes as written.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now, there's no administrative, uh, no consent agenda or administrative, uh, items, items. Um, so we will move into legislative session. Um, Eternal Spring LLC re- requests to amend the Springville City zoning map to apply the senior housing overlay zone to parcel number as written, located at approximately three hundred south, nine fifty west.
Alright, so, this is the final item, hopefully to get all of this done for Eternal Springs. Did you know, so there, you guys know all the background for you, I'll just do a quick, uh, um, overview. They came to us in February, originally this parcel that they own was, it, it is bisected by the canal and it had two separate zones on it. They requested that it all be put into neighborhood commercial back in February. We did that. Um, city council approved that in March, we were good to go. And then, they came to us with, um, to add the senior ha- independent senior living as a permitted use in the neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood commercial had no residential allowed in it at all, so we realized as we had discussion with the planning commission, that we didn't have any design guidelines to govern how to do a residential development. Even though it wa- it's kind of weird commercial, because it's a commercial venture for them, but they're gonna be residential, and so, um, it was continued. Gone back and forth, um, we've been able to work with Greg Neil, who is, um, the petitioner Eternal Springs, um, and work out design guidelines. You've appro- you approved those last week. Now, we have to do the final thing of actually applying the overlay, because it is a zone map amendment to this parcel. Um, and so that is what we're here to do tonight, to, um, apply that, uh, overlay, so that therefore they can go ahead with the development of the independent living, senior independent living as previously approved. Any questions?
None for me.
Okay, I will let you do the public hearing.
We'll now open the public hearing. For anyone that wants to come speak.
Seeing as no one is coming forward to speak, I motion that we close the public hearing.
And then a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, discussion on this.
I don't have any, I think we've discussed this at, now, Sam.
Yeah, we've been through this a lot.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah.
Is there any additional information from staff as far as?
No, it's, and, it's, we probably could have combined it with last commission meeting to do it at the same time, and, uh, what I think we came up with, so, that's why we're here, definitely.
Pete? Pete, if you wanna know where that is, you know where Ashford is, right? Ashford Senior Living, right over down here.
Just down here is Fourth South.
Here, like, yeah, I'll just scroll out a little bit, so you get.
It's right behind Ashford Living.
Yeah, so here's four hundred south, and then, um, and they, so they, and they own this part, so it's the same people. Um, I believe they have a different LLC that owns this parcel, but it is all of the same group. Um, and so, they will be doing the development here.
How big is the parcel?
Um...
Almost the same size as Ashford right now.
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller, I think it's a... I am clicking on it.
Click on it, let's see.
That's what's so fun about it. Should I may keep clicking? Uh, no, it's, yeah, it's, sometimes it shows up and doesn't, so, um, anyway.
No worries.
That's, that's their parcel.
Well, you made, you made mine disappear, so, hope it's right. So, nice, nice job with the clicking.
Um, yeah, I don't know that I have any other comments, I mean, I feel like we're good to go. So, do I have a recommendation?
Well, let's see. I'll, I'll make the motion if you want.
Sure, please.
I'll move to recommend, uh, oh, sorry, move to approve. Move to recommend approv- approving the amendments to the Springville City zoning map to apply senior housing overlay zone to parcel two, three, zero, three, one, zero, zero, eight, nine, located approximately three hundred south and nine fifty west. Also, let me note that that, um, the written, um, motion says move to approve. Just wanted, wanted to make sure it went on the record. So, there's the motion.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, next, um...
No, sure, it's not even a feature, it was probably, but he didn't want to be, tell you, thank you very much for all of your work and efforts and considerations.
Will you text him and let him know that was denied?
I will let him know.
He's gotta have a little fun with the guy.
He's gotta come back again.
He's been through it.
I may be listening right now, so I'll have to check in.
Oh, good. I could, I'll text him, I have his number.
I'll text him.
Okay, um, our next item is Springville City seeks to amend Parks and Recreation Master Plan to delineate the boundary for the Civic Center Park.
Alright, so that, you have one staff report for this, um, I don't know why I'm struggling so hard right now, um... Because the two items are very close and, and have to do to work together, they made more sense to put them into one staff report. Alright, so, this is gonna be a lot of stuff, I'm gonna do very high level, if you have additional questions about anything that comes out of state code, um, regarding alcohol licensing, let me know, but I didn't wanna put it in here, because I don't need to overload you if you don't need to know it. Or don't, you know, feel compelled to know about alcohol law. Alright, so, the Parks and Recreation Trails, Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan was adopted in May of twenty-two, and it of course includes, um, the Civic Center as a park. Um, the one thing that was, um, a little bit different about this is, as you can see, it says down here park boundary, but then there is no delineation. In the other parks, um, in the plan, um, you, it will say park boundary, and you can see where there is a line that specifically delineates the boundary.
Was that just an oversight, it didn't really say in the document?
Yes, yes. I, that's what we figure as we, as I've talked to Stacy, as we've talked to the people who did the plan, it was purely just kind of an oversight. Um, it does indicate where parking is, it does indicate the splash pad, you know, park entry, parking area, everything else is indicated on here, and I, my thought, and Stacy, as we talked about this, was they just kind of, I'm sure that they just assumed, um, it takes a, it's a city block, it's a city block, we don't need to delineate that. Um, and, but, there wasn't, but we don't know for sure. Like I said, Stacy and I were just kind of assuming that that's probably where that thought process came from. Um, and so...
Where it's notated in the legend, though. That should be required, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, so this is, so that's kind of where, what brought us here today, is because there is not a boundary, um, that is specifically delineated in the image of the, um, that were actually included in, included in the appendices of the master plan, um, it has always just gone on the assumption that, um, as you see, there's a purple arrow there that says park entry. So, that kind of gives the assumption that that is where they considered the park to start. Um, and once again, we can only make that assumption, but it's a pretty safe one. So, the reframing downtown master plan, which we've talked about a lot throughout this, throughout the couple of years that we've been doing that, one of the main considerations that was that there were a couple of things, one was two not through. So, we wanted people to come to Main Street and stay there, not just driving through on their way to somewhere else. Um, and part of that was, um, also was the concept we called lean into art, which also included the culinary arts and small businesses as an integral part of the development and the revitalization of downtown. So, this property here is owned, was, was a little Chinese restaurant. Um, their owner decided to quit the restaurant business and leased the space to Cody's Gastro Garage. In addition, here, I'm gonna pull this up on the map, because this picture doesn't show it quite as well. We also have Art City Inn, which is on the corner of Fourth, or excuse me, of First West and Second South. And, no, First South, sorry, I really do know where I live, I promise. Um, and the people who have purchased that recently also were looking at doing some development in the parcel next to them, to them, which is, so Art City Inn is located here on the corner, I was right, Second South, sorry, and First West. This is a duplex, they have purchased that property, and their plans were to, um, turn that into more of the, the additional, um, rental space for the hotel, um...
Where's that hat shop from here?
They are right there.
Oh, the fifty, okay.
Yes, right here. Um, and so, um, and as part of that, on the bottom level, they planned on putting in a cafe and, um, hopefully to serve breakfast or brunch. Um, and they included in that, as part of their business plan, being able to serve alcohol. So, we have both this location and this location. Now, this is where it gets kind of weird. So, state law says that an alcohol licensee restaurant licensee, or so, actually, it's an on-premise consumption. So, if you're a restaurant or a bar, then you cannot be within two hundred feet of a community location as defined as a public park, a public school, um, a library, or a church. So, these both end, but they define it in two weird ways. One, either two hundred feet as you walk from the main entrance, or three hundred feet basically as a crow flies. Um, so, if they were to have an entrance here at the back at Art City, which they were thinking they would, have a, have an additional entrance here, so that people who were parked back here as were, wouldn't have to walk all the way around, they would not, following what we had as an assumed boundary for the park, they would not be the direct with it two hundred feet away. And neither, of course, would, um, Cody's Gastro Garage. Um, Maggillby's is an exception, don't worry about them, their grandfathered in on an old law, you don't need to know about it. But just know for...
Thanks for bringing it up, then.
Yes, well, I knew you were gonna ask me, and I ju- it's just, it, they don't, it doesn't apply to them because of your grandfather, fathered under an old state statute. So, recognizing this, when, um, Cody's Gastro Garage came to us for a liquor license, we have to provide what is called local consent, and we denied it because it was too close to a park. DABS leaves us to define what a park is, or if, and if something is too close. They don't come out and measure, they don't care, they ju- they trust the cities and the local entities to make that decision. So, as we've, as, so as we talked about this with the council and staff, we then decided that we could delineate the park, um, at the Civic Center with a specific boundary. And that boundary would allow this space, which includes the splash pad and the gazebo, to be the park. And this pla- this area here would not be included in the boundary of the park.
What would that be considered, I was...
That is coming up in part two.
Okay, I did read thi- I did read this, but I didn't understand it when I read it, so...
Stay tuned.
Okay.
For the next episode. So, our first part is to define this, or to delineate this boundary. And because it is in a master plan, the state requires that we come before planning commission, because it is considered a land use ordinance. So, that is why we are here. Now, Josh, is it better for me to just go on and explain the next part and then let them do the two hearings separately? Would, would you guys rather hear the definitions now that goes along with this, that will answer your question now?
I think I would.
Even though it's section two, okay. So, what we've done is we have defined a park, and it is in, like I said, the sec- the second section of, it's on the last page of your staff report, that def- has definitions, we added the definition of a community gathering area. This seems like maybe we, it's kind of, why, why do we have to designate it as anything? For a couple of reasons, one, it will be included in determining the level of service and that the Parks Master Plan has as to how many acres that they have of space for our level of service in our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. It is still programmed exactly the same as far as farmers market, or having any of, um, the events, Art City Days, whatever. It doesn't change how we will use it, it just simply changes what we call it. And unfortunately, because state code does that, does what it does with being so far from a community location, it's, it's something that we've had to, had to do to consider in order to, um, promote what we want to do in the reframing downtown plan. And be friendly to our small businesses who are trying to do what we asked them to do in the reframing downtown. So, we, we designated a public park, um, that it would have a playground, a swimming pool, a golf course, something like that, that there, and then, that a community gathering area, um, is still under the control of the city and Parks and Recreation, um, and can, and it will still be programmed, we can use it exactly the same, but is just not defined as a park. This also may come in to play when we talk about the art loops, which I'm sure that you have heard about. And, um, the space here that the city owns, which is right next to Ginger's and Funfinity in between, that the city owns, um, and that space will be activated through the art loops and the arts master plan, um, and will be a community gathering area rather than a park. So, there may be, we don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet, um, there may be parks, there may be, or, I mean, benches, places to eat, but it will be a community gathering area rather than a park, if that makes...
Yep.
...in distinction for it. Okay, so that's what we are, um, so the first order of business is the, um, public hearing on the master, on the delineation of the boundary in the master plan. Um, and you'll go through the whole public hearing process with that, make the motion and the recommendation of, as you would, if it was a separate, and then move to the second public hearing for, um, the amendments to the articles, article four defi- or article three definitions. Okay?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, this is a state code, right?
The state, the, the proximity, yes. It's Title thirty-two B, the Alcoholic Beverage Control Act.
And that, that's been in place for quite some time, right?
Yes, um, it has had changes made to it over the years, um, as part of the Olympics, like they did away with pub, pub, private clubs, um, and went to a different type of license. Um, they even changed, like I said, the proximity requirements, that is how, um, uh, Maggillby's is grandfathered in. So, we were hoping we would see changes from the state this year in ha- in definitions and in, um, distances, but they ma- made it very, very narrow just to, um, apply to the development of the Point of the Mountain.
Oh, so they're, they're not planning on updating the, the language of as far as the distance?
Not now. Um, there is a possibility that it will come back next year in some form. Um, I've spoken with the lobbyists for the Utah Hotels, or excuse me, Restaurant Association, who is kind of leading the charge. We don't know when it will come back, and it would be another year of waiting for both of these entities. Um, Art City Inn is moving ahead with their site plan approval, and, um, Cody's is already in operation. And not knowing, if we knew for sure, hey, this is gonna come up in the state and it's gonna be fine, what, we wait? We have really no idea what may happen with it.
What are the hours of operation of this cafe?
We hope until... Yes, and that's the other distinction in state code, it, under the license that he would be getting, it would be a full-service restaurant license, which means food must be served, and, um, a total percentage of their sales aggregate must be with food. It must be seventy percent food, thirty percent alcohol. Um, and the same would, and the same would happen with Art City Inn, they're both looking at full service. And the only reason that they choose a full service rather than a limited service is if they want to serve a Bloody Mary, they have to have a full service license, because it contains a hard alcohol. And our state defines wine and hard, hard alcohol differently. And cell source, yes. Yes.
Any more questions for?
No, I don't have any other questions.
Are you, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Now, uh, would you like to open up for a pub- public hearing? If anyone would like to come forward?
On which item specifically?
On item number two, the, on, open up the public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan to delineate the boundary of the Civic Center Park.
Okay, my name's Chris Shurian, uh, with Cody's Gastro Garage, and I think this, uh, delineation is needed, and I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Seeing that no one is continuing to come forward, other than Cody, thank you, uh, move that we close the public hearing. A second motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Hey, any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, here, here are my thoughts on it, when I read through it, um... We, we want businesses in Springville, and, uh, sometimes that requires, I'm, I'm not a drinking man, but I'm also not a prohibition guy. So, but we, we wanna, we wanna be business friendly, and as long as it's monitored, I mean, we're sitting right next to the police station and, and, uh, you know, as long as it, it follows the guidelines that, that the state sets out, I'm, I'm comfortable with this.
Yeah.
That was part of the reason why I was asking about if and when it was gonna change, because a lot of active downtowns have bars, um, and they, it, it actually induces great nighttime activity. Um, I mean, uh, I'm, I'm the same way, like, I'm not, I don't drink, but also am not opposed to people doing that. And so, I would think that the staff has done a great job of finding that, you know, for lack of a better term loophole, or, you know, being able to delineate where our boundaries are. Um, the one thing that I, I'd just be interested to see how that affects is, um, just the future businesses and what that activity could potentially look like.
Good question.
Um, but...
I mean, you're talking about bars and stuff like that.
Right, be- because it, I, I know it's a different, uh, license type that they're gonna be required to, to pull out, but at the same time, um, and, and the community may feel differently. Um, but, having seen, whether it was college towns or historic downtowns, lots of different places, that they have great nighttime activity and people are going to, not through, their downtowns, it's a good chunk of it can be alcohol and serving and activity that way.
Yeah.
So...
Ev- even there, I think proper management's gonna be important, and I don't know if our police department is, is prepared to manage this appropriately, if it turns into what you're talking about. And by the way, I'm not even opposed to that, I, I, I look at, I look at those types of downtowns that I've walked through all, all around the world. And, uh, they're just great, great things to have.
Yeah, and I, I, I was recently in Texas in Denton, and there's, I was on a rooftop patio bar, I had a great burger. And I was overlooking a civic center that had this great building in, in the center, and the whole entire square was lit up. But there was also live music and a bar playing, and that rest, that location's sales were probably
Yeah.
Let, more than thirty percent, um, alcohol sales, so, I think there's, there's a way to address it moving forward, either way, so...
Well, I think, I'm, I'm in the same boat. I think that, you know, encouraging businesses, we want the businesses to thrive, you know, and that's just one more aspect of it. It's not the whole thing, but it doesn't hurt, I'm sure, to keep Cody's where it is, and not that, you know, that that's the main thing, but helps, I'm sure, to stay in business. And that's, that's another thing I think that kills, is that businesses come and go, and people, you know, they don't get attached to them, they don't have any connection to them, because they can't survive, for one reason or the other. And if it helps that business survive, then that's one more step closer to having a thriving downtown.
I, I think I would say that, that just proper manage- management from a city perspective, because I've seen both, both kinds, where it turns into a fun, great place to be, and others where it's not so fun anymore.
Yeah.
And, and so I just think proper management, I don't know if that's the police department who that would be, Josh, I don't know if you would have any insight on that or not.
In my, albeit very limited experience, uh, public safety has not had any issue with a full-service restaurant, exactly for the reason Carla mentioned, uh...
I'm just saying if it gets, if it gets...
But, in the, if, you know, we end up having, you know, a bar-crawlable Main Street, uh, it is, uh, really does come down to management. We've had an issue with, uh, we've had issues with a bar in town, and that has required a lot of, uh, time from public safety and other departments in kind of crafting the response to that. Uh, so, they, they have experience with that, and also I think they would have, you know, obviously, input into the process, uh, of changing zoning laws that would permit those type of establishments downtown, because we currently don't. So, I, I think they definitely wanna be involved, especially with their recent experience.
In fact, so, Hunter, before we make the motion, my, my thoughts were maybe add something to the motion about, about public safety management, and making sure that our public safety department is, is well aware of. And just, and again, this, I don't think Cody's is gonna have a bunch of people out there having bar fights in the streets.
Alright.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, if, if our vision of making this cities, this Main Street amazing, so that businesses like Cody's can survive and e- and thrive in this environment, and other, than other places aside, we're com- we're coming to town, we're gonna do the same thing. That's, I just wanna make sure it's properly managed from a public safety perspective.
So, as far as adding something to the motion, like, I know staff is recommending that we approve this. Would the extra verbiage essentially state that staff then coordinate any additional boundary or licensing with public safety? Or how, how would you wanna make that motion?
Just to, to make sure that public safety is engaged in preparing themselves for, it sounds like they've somewhere in town, they've had this experience, and they're, they sound, it sounds like they're pretty good at, and I don't see, I probably know which place you're talking about, but again, Cody's is not that place, they said...
And if I could clarify one thing, um, as having had a lot of, had been had, I wanna, I don't wanna, I wanted to hear the high side of this, and I don't want to make myself sound like a, a drunkard. Oh, yeah, I had that last time. Having had a lot of experience in downtown Salt Lake, where we had to do some zoning changes, and we, and we, you know, we have, um, a worldwide church headquarters down there, and, and there was a lot of concern about that. Restaurants are much easier to manage, um, than, say, a Maverick, or, um, any type of convenience store, which the state puts no requirements on as far as location. Um, for someone to, you know, grab a six-pack and then go walking down the street, or go sit on the side of the street, and then, you know, um, public intoxication or public, um, consumption comes into the place. In a restaurant, you can't, if your family is sitting here and your friends are sitting over at this table, you can't pick up your beer and walk over to this table with it. It is that closely regulated. Um, you definitely can't walk outside of the restaurant without it. Um, and so, there would take a huge amount of changes at the state level for us to ever get to the point where we're doing a bar crawl. Um, that's simply, that you cannot do it in Utah, as, as the state laws stand now. So, the restrictions and the, and the ability for, um, a... So, the restrictions and the, and the ability for, um, a business owner to, um, control the movement of alcohol and of someone drinking in and out of their establishment and controlling the amount they drink, there is no limit. If one person walks in and buys two thirty packs, that's it. There's going to be a limit to the amount of alcohol that a restaurateur can serve to one person. Um, and, y- yes, and so I just wanted to clarify that. Um, and, you know, servers go through extensive training on how to slow people down so they don't drink, what they can and can't do, um, what drinks can be made of. Um, you know, the Utah code will even stipulates how much alcohol can be put into a beverage. And so, um, for restaurants and in this, it, it is just more of an economic development driver to be able to have people who, um, live in our community, who visit our community, to be able to go and, and party. So, thank you. Let me clarify that.
I'll give it a whirl, if you want.
Sure.
It might be a little unconventional, but I've been unconventional before. I move to recommend approval of the amendments, uh, if you're, if you guys are ready, is there any?
Yeah, no.
I move to recommend the approval of the amendments to the Springville City Parks Recreation Trails and Open Space Master Plan to delineate the boundary of Civic Center Park as outlined in attachment number one. While this recommendation is being made, we would also like to encourage the public safety department to properly manage the fun to be had outside these restaurants on Main Street. How's that?
That's creative.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now we'd like to open up the public hearing for item number three. Springville Community Development seeks to amend, uh, Title eleven, Chapter three, Article four definitions.
Well, I think Carla covered all the thoughts I had a minute ago about how regulated we are and that our servers are absolutely trained to cut people off at a certain time. So it's not, we, we don't want, as Carla's favorite word, drunkards, you know, in our establishment. You know, it's a family restaurant, so we, we control that very, very clearly. So, um, so the opportunity to do that will have a, a huge impact on our business in a positive way. You know, we, our, our Saturday and Sunday brunch has become quite popular, but, you know, we're losing a lot of business to these other guys that serve, you know, adult beverages. And, uh, our evening business, it will benefit greatly from it. So, I think the way that the city has put this together, I think staff did a great job of, of, uh, coming up with a, an, a, an opportunity to, to make this work for us. So, I'm good.
Thanks for being here.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All the best with the business. Hope it, hope it flourishes.
Been a good time, let me tell you. But also on top of that note, we have one, we have a restaurant in Nephi and we, we just acquired a, a full-service restaurant license in Nephi. We're the only full-service restaurant in Nephi, actually.
It's a Cody's also.
Yeah, it's a Cody's also and, um, and we've seen a, a, a huge increase in business by now offering that from all around the community. You know, Nephi's only this big, but they come to Nephi now to eat at our establishment because they know they can have a, a beer or a seltzer, a glass of wine. So we've seen a really great positive impact. And, um, and we're very law enforcement friendly. I don't know if you know this, but we, we actually give fifty percent discount to any, uh, law enforcement or, or, um, first responders that come in. And so, and, and they're some of our best customers, actually, in Nephi. You know, the sheriff comes in, his deputies come in and off-duty, of course, and enjoy a beverage. So it's been, it's really been a great benefit down there and we, we kind of anticipate that happening here as well.
I hope so too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Seeing that no one else is coming forward for the public hearing, I recommend that we close the public hearing at this time.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, any discussion on this one? I'll just reiterate what, kind of what I already said. Like, I think staff has done a great job as far as delineating the definition between park versus a community gathering space, especially for what Carla pointed out, the, the art walk that will, I think, draw even just more traffic, even to Cody's and other places that like that. So, I think it's a great job.
I second that. Good job.
Do we have a motion on item number three?
Yeah, I will move to recommend approval of the amendments to Title eleven, Chapter three, Article four definitions.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that is it unless staff has anything else for us tonight? No? Okay. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.